This is the September 12th, 2017 meeting of the City Council. I'm calling the meeting order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Here.
Majikis.
Here.
Gallo.
Here.
Baner.
Here.
Diastis.
Here.
Vemas.
Yes.
Here.
Let's get warmed up.
With six present, we do have a quorum. The first order of business is to approve the minutes from the August 15, 2017 committee of the whole meeting and the August 22nd, 2017 council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Cannon has made it, it has been seconded. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. Under the mayor's report, it's been a busy couple of weeks. First, I want to note that I did send a letter to the Honorable Sean M. Morrison, 17th District Commissioner, to the Cook County Board of Commissioners. I also sent copies to Tony Pepperwinkle, Greg Goslin, the 14th District Commissioner, Timothy Schneider, 15th District. And in the letter, we stated that we support repealing the sugar tax and the Cook County sugar tax and how it has affected businesses and how consumers are leaving Cook County to go shop in the areas around Cook County. I also had the opportunity on Labor Day to attend Arlington Race Track on behalf of Rolling Meadows for the City of Rolling Meadows Sweepstake Race. And I awarded the cup to the winner on the fifth race. Did have the opportunity to renew some ties and we did have some discussion about bringing Rolling Meadows Days back to the racetrack, so we'll be working on that in the beginning of the year. For those of you that came out to the concert on Friday, it was great. I'm told by either, I think it was Mr. Czak, that approximately 750 people were in attendance. The food truck and the ice cream folks that were there, I think, I believe they ran out of food, which was really a tough thing to have. And I was also informed that we had one of the best duck races that we've had in a while. $2,000 was raised, so that was really a great evening. And I look forward to the next event, which is the hoedown. Oh, I'm sorry, city market before that. Thank you. Are there any reward reports this evening? Mr. Diastis.
Thank you. I've had several residents in my ward and throughout the city contact me about skunks. And I know the mild winter and the mild spring encourages more mating and more skunks. I would like to propose that we put at the next committee of the whole, a discussion of what the city can do to assist people. I've heard that another community is offering some kind of a rebate to the residents that are having this problem. They, the residents, would contact the private sources, pay it, and then submit a bill to the city, and the city would pay for a portion with a maximum on there. So I'd like to bring that up and see if we can't assist some of our residents with the skunk problem that they have.
Thank you. Mr. Crumstock, when you have a time to schedule that?
We would have the time to talk about that, and we do know which municipality you're referring to.
Thank you. Are there any other award reports? Alderman, Dr. Jack.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a thank you. I was invited and attended today the senior luncheon, and it was a wonderful turnout. And Elvis is alive. He was there. So I just wanted to say thank you to Community Events, to the Senior Center, and I really had a wonderful time, and it was great meeting new residents in my ward and outside of my ward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other award reports? Seeing none, this is now part of the meeting, which is open to the public. We do have two signatories on the sign-in sheet. I do have something to read first. The council meeting is now open to members of the audience for 20 minutes to address the city council on matters that are not on the agenda or regarding other issues. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor, and profanity may not be used in any form. The first one on the signatory is Tressa Glassman. Did I say that correct?
Yes, but I'm just an observer.
Well, thank you, and we're glad that you're here tonight, okay? So, the next gentleman is Steve Hollis. Good evening. I don't have to read any rules to you.
No, I know the rules. I guess it started out last week when I started to look at the agendas coming up and noticed that the fire station purchase price, or not purchase price, land purchase was on the agenda for tonight. And with that, I went back and went through all the committee of the whole and the public meetings and everything else that had been occurring with regards to moving Station 15 and 16. So I'm sort of glad to see that you're finally getting to the purchasing some land. I don't know how much the organization that you've committed to help get property has been helping. That was one of my questions, which I don't think anybody here can answer that. I don't know if they've been ongoing with the land for 16. I see there's land for 15, and I'm glad it's down on Algonquin, and it's going to alleviate ward for Mr. Diastis. I guess one of the main concerns I've got is I see that it's $1.3 million, and I don't know how that's being budgeted. I don't know if you're going to get a bond going, and I don't know if that bond's going to be for just 15, or is it going to be a bond for 15 and 16? And then you're leaving a loophole there where if you get the bond for 15, and all of a sudden you get 16 going, are you going to have to get a separate bond going? So, and I don't see anything in the agenda for tonight that actually rules out, you've got $1.3 million for this property, but how much is 15 really going to cost? Nowhere. I've seen estimates in all the background, and I've never seen anything hard. I haven't seen the project plan from the associate on how long this is going to take. A lot of my answers came from the article in the Herald where it said, oh, you might start building in spring, and then it's going to take 18 months to complete. That's a long time. And being my background is project planning, I haven't seen a project plan. I haven't seen anything from the group saying, yeah, we're going to meet our goals, we're going to have these goals coming up. And that also turns into, how much is the budget? $1.3 is a small thing, but if you don't know what you're building and you don't have a budget for it, how can you even go through and buy the land? I guess those are questions you should be talking about tonight, like saying, okay, yeah, you'll approve it, you've changed the zoning, you've got the purchase price for the land down, but yet, what does it cost totally for 15? So I expect to hear that tonight, and I guess the residents want to hear that too, that it's a two-phased approach. You're going to move 15, that's a great thing, you're going to improve the calls down on the south side, but what about 60? Nothing's been said. So I expect to hear a lot of that tonight, as an added to purchasing the property, but it would be nice to hear what you're doing for 16, so. That's all I've got. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. That now brings us to the part of the meeting where it's ordinances for the second reading. Ordinance A is to grant a special use and sign appeal for the drive-through retail operation in C2 Commercial District, 1921 Algonquin Road, Dunkin' Donuts. This ordinance, if adopted, would grant a special use and sign appeal for the drive-through proposed at Dunkin' Donuts Baskett Robbins. At its meeting held on Wednesday, August 2nd, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission gave unanimous approval to the proposed redevelopment with conditions. Is there a motion to adopt that ordinance? Mr. Baner has made that and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Vemas.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
With six ayes and none opposed, it does pass forward. The next item on the agenda is the consent item, consent ordinances. It consists of three items, three C through E. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
C and D, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. So in that case, we no longer have a consent agenda, so we will go through these one at a time, starting with C. Mr. Gallo, since you pulled these, you have first right. I'm sorry. Pardon me. It declares in order for one motion to consider, or, I'm sorry.
Because it's not consent.
No, I know, individual, as I say. One motion to consider ordinance C, text amendment for T1 and T2 districts for the, this ordinance, if adopted, would amend the city's comprehensive zoning code to allow fire stations in city T1 and T2 zoning districts. Do I have such a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
It's been seconded. Mr. Gallo, since you pulled it, you have first crack at discussion.
Well, primarily consent ordinance by definition, a group of items where the subject matter is acquiescingly agreeable and non-controversial in nature, and I think that the fire stations themselves are controversial. And I want to make sure that when moving forward with rezoning, though I don't feel it's appropriate at this time to move forward with adding the terminology to the zone, that we do look into pulling this and having a complete comprehensive discussion about it.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Vemas.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Majikis.
No.
Gallo.
No.
With four approved and two against, the ordinance does move forward. This brings us to ordinance D, the contract for the purchase of 3201 Algonquin Road. Do we have a motion to move that forward?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Diastis has made that, it has been seconded. This ordinance, if adopted, would authorize the mayor and the deputy city clerk to execute and deliver on behalf of the city a purchase and sales agreement, providing for the city to purchase the property, commonly known as 3201 Algonquin Road, Rolling Meadows, Illinois, to allow the city to acquire the property for the purpose of building a fire station. Mr. Gallo, since you pulled it, you have first discussion.
Okay, so this one again goes back to budgets and maybe sharpening the pencil on the budget. I'm referring back to the original study that was conducted when the city was planning to move and relocate both fire stations. And in that study, we were said to spend a million dollars for both parcels, and here we are spending $1.3 on one. So I think it's time that we reassess our move forward, get a budget in place, practical numbers with expectations, a timeframe for the project, and be able to communicate that back out to the community as well.
Anything else?
That's it.
Any other discussion? Ms. Alderman, Majikis.
I'm in agreement with Alderman Gallo, and I strongly oppose the moving of 15. And while I understand response call time improving in Mr. Diastis's ward with 16 up in the air, what does it do to the response time in Ward 3? And I have residents that are concerned about that, so I am not in favor of this, and I will not support it. And I think that it is a hot topic, and I think, I just, I have no, I have no support for this whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Alderman Baner?
Thank you. I've been on this council for six years. This has been a hot topic. Each one of those six years, I've had two fire chiefs who told me that you'll never find a hotter topic when it comes to moving fire stations. We've deliberated this, not quite to death, but we've been very deliberate in our plans to move this. I understand this doesn't fit the budget that we had, but that's just because it was an estimate. Once we started looking around and kicking these properties around in closed session, I think the scales fell off our eyes, and we realized that land acquisition price was actually an estimate, and it was quite a low estimate, and I think we are all shocked about that. But we found a piece, we're buying it, we're moving ahead with this. And when I say I've been dealing with this for six years, we have a colleague on council who was dealing with it for at least four years before that. So this has been one of the longest projects that the city's been doing, and it's finally, hopefully, coming to a conclusion, and I feel good about it, which is why I'm supporting it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Gallo.
I think that when you're blinded by a duration and you find that an estimate is so far off the mark in terms of millions of dollars, that it's important and appropriate to slow down and reassess, because anything else in the study for moving the project plan forward, my faith in that is shaken, and the credibility is just not there.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Vemas.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Majikis.
No.
Gallo.
No.
Baner.
Yes.
With four, four and two against, it does move forward. This brings us to ordinance E, disposal of the ordinance. Do I have a motion to adopt? Mr. Baner has made it, has been seconded. This ordinance, if adopted, would allow for the disposal of items that have been determined to be surplus by the Public Works Fire Department and Police Department. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry.
Baner made the motion.
We made a motion.
Yeah.
Motion.
Discussion.
Yes.
We did make a motion.
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
You make a motion, thank you.
Amen.
And it has been seconded, thank you. Is there, is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Gallo.
Discussion in question, primarily, do our respective departments have an estimated value for the equipment that they're looking to put up to auction before dealing with the auction?
Mr., sorry, Rob, I'm sorry.
That's fine. We do have it, we can provide it, we don't have it right now. I can provide it before the second reading. Okay. Sure. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Vemas.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Vemas.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Majikis.
No.
Gallo.
No.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, that does pass. This now brings the council to new business. The item, next item of business is to approve the warrants for 91217 as presented by the Finance Department. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Mr. Cannon has made it, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? The clerk will please call the roll.
Cannon.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Vemas.
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed, that does go forward. The next item on the agenda is the consent resolution. It consists of six items, items G through L. The mayor will be pulling the K, item K, so that will bring us down to five items. Does any alderman wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Mr. Cannon.
G, Mr. Mayor.
That brings the consent agenda down to four items. Is there a motion to consider items H, I, J, and L?
So moved, sir.
Thank you, and it has been seconded. Resolution H. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize the acceptance of a proposal to complete the annual leak detection survey of the city's water distribution system. I is resolution number 17R-106, award change order for number one, order number one for well number one repair. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize a change order to the approved contract with Lane Christiansen for all, for the well maintenance project. J, resolution number 17-R-107, award contract for street sweeping. This resolution, if adopted, would approve a contract with TKG Sweeping, previously known as PNS Sweeping, to supplement in-house street sweeping during the four to six, six-week period in autumn for the collection of leaves this fall into the city streets. This resolution, resolution L, number 17-R-109, approve contract for range ventilation. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize a contract with Clark DS for the professional services to design, develop plans, and specifications, and provide construction phase oversight for the modifications to the ventilation system for the police department shooting range to remedy the existing problems. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Vemas.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
With six affirmative and zero against, those move forward. Mr. Cannon, you moved resolution, you pulled resolution.
In a motion.
G.
I need G. Do I have a motion for resolution G to go forward?
Sure, I've opposed it.
And it's been seconded, thank you. Mr. Cannon, discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm for us moving forward this. I guess the question I would ask is, looking at, I apologize, I probably should have called Public Works this week and asked them some questions about this. I'm just concerned about some of the streets that are on here, because I think a couple of these streets are streets that we're talking about possibly putting sewers on in not-too-distant future. Sunset Court? Or am I wrong in that?
No, Sunset Court does have all the utilities, Sunset Lane does not.
Same thing with Wood Cliff?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I should have called you, I didn't.
That's okay.
Okay, so I'm for this, I guess, I just want to make sure that we have, you know, we've been working a whole year ahead of time, so I'm hoping this is like next year or the year after, or part of it, because that's what we've been doing, so that's.
Yeah, we're coining all of our road projects with our utility improvements.
Okay, thanks for the answers, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Are there any other discussion on this item? Will the clerk please call the roll then?
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Vemas.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
With six forward and none opposed, it moves forward, thank you. This brings the council to business, other business and reports. I have no appointments as mayor.
You pulled K.
I pulled K, correct, and the, I'm sorry, I pulled K, and I'm told from Public Works that they're going to bring it back because there were some challenges with the special.
Literally.
I literally pulled it with K off the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have no appointments or proclamations, does the clerk have a report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
This brings us to the city staff reports, and that would mean, Mr. Crumstock.
I actually have the next two, and obviously, two of them have already been mentioned, but we do want to thank all the residents, friends, and especially the volunteers who came out for the final 2018 Friday Rocks and Roll in the Meadows. Obviously, heartache tonight, really, did a really nice job. It was cool, nice, we had the fire pit going, but we do greatly appreciate everybody who came out for that. And we are already starting to plan for 2019, or 2018, I should say. That was the last of the 2017. And then we do want to thank everybody again, as what was mentioned, to the duck race that was also held last Friday. The creek wasn't the best in the world, but the ducks did flow down a short period of time, did make it to the chute. We did have 26 some odd winners there. We did start talking about next year. Assistant Public Works Director over there, Rob Horn, is actually starting to think about the waterfall and getting some netting and some catching, so the ducks will actually swim a little bit farther without being pushed along and little blowers helping them on their way, so we do expect everybody in 2018 to be out at the duck race again. We do want to mention, as what was earlier mentioned, the last regular scheduled farmers' and food truck for the 2017 season is scheduled for Saturday, September 23rd. We hope everybody does come out. We do have that farmers' and food truck here at City Hall, and that's between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. And then obviously, what was mentioned too, is Saturday, October 7th, the city, the Park District and Community Events Foundation will be conducting the Hometown Hoedown in Kimble Hill Park from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. We do have two different musical groups, obviously, one is playing earlier on for younger kids, and then obviously, later on that night, I think it's 3:30 to 6, or 3:00 to 6. We actually have the same band that we had last year, again, a little country music and the end of the fall opportunities. And then the final one that we actually want to say is, October is Fire Department and Fire Rescue and Fire Awareness Month overall, but. everybody can have, you know, all the information and form their own opinion on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Majikis. Yes, Alderman Gallo?
I have a series of phone calls from residents last week regarding the old Dominick's property, but not the usual conversations of old Dominick's property, but more along the lines of the lawn care and landscaping. Over the course of the past week, it was brought to my attention that it looked really bad. And the thing about weeds is that they grow like weeds, so it doesn't look bad until it looks really bad, and that's basically overnight. So I brought it up to Clark Street, and Clark Street then said that they have a reciprocal agreement with the City of Rolling Meadows that we park our cars there for car shows, and they'll tend to the parkways, which is fantastic, and it's worked out. Thank you guys for manicuring the grounds today. However, inside the fencing still looks bad, and I'm not sure if I feel as though it's almost by design from Clark Street to say, we took down your structures, now here you go, look at this beautiful sight. But anecdotally, when I was building my home and trying to allow my grass to regrow in my yard after the heavy machinery was on there, and I let my grass grow to a certain length to let it drop seed, I received a series of admonishing letters from our community development department about the length of my grass. So I would hope that we're doing the same to the owners of the property with inside that parking lot.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo.
Thank you.
Are there any other matters not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Cannon has made it, and it has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're done. Thank you.[1624.01]